Before we begin, this is a workshop of the school committee. Workshops are slightly different from those of you who have attended public meetings. It is really more of a casual discussion amongst school committee members. And we, the rules are a little more relaxed. There still will be public comment. Workshops don't have to have public comment, but we believe part of the reason we're doing this is to have public comment, so there will be public comment. Based on the crowd, probably going to be five minutes, but we'll see what happens. The way it will work out is the school committee is going to discuss a few items in the beginning amongst ourselves. Then, at some point, we will start opening up for public comment. There's a signup sheet down in the front to your right at that desk. If you do want to talk when we have public comment, please fill in your name, your address, and at the appropriate time, you can call it up. Microphone's right here in the front, so please come to that. And like I said, we're looking at possibly five minutes. We do have a timekeeper. There will be a little bit of alarm that will go off when you've hit your time period. If for any reason it gets to be more, I do have the ability to adjust the time people are speaking. When you're at the podium, be recognized by myself. First, you're supposed to talk, everything's supposed to go through the chair, not to an individual school committee member or anybody, or the public. Let's see what else we've got here. While speaking or sitting, listening, members of the public are expected to refrain from causing disruption to a room or 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 a[143.32]
Again, it's up to the school principal, meeting with the guidance staff, school psychologist, to see if there's anything that they need to consider, but they would, yes, allow the student to use that bathroom. I don't know how more direct I can be. The student would be permitted to use either the bathroom of the gender that they identify with, or to use a gender-neutral bathroom. The gender-neutral bathrooms are open to any of our students, however.
Okay. So just to make sure I understand, it wouldn't, it's, the parents wouldn't be informed, not necessarily based on safety, it would just ultimately be the student's decision, nothing to do with safety?
I don't think I said that at all. Safety is certainly...
Let me rephrase. I didn't mean that you didn't consider safety. I'm saying that the student wouldn't have to bring up safety as a concern as to why they didn't want to, not the parents.
I'm just going to default to, it's always best to bring the families one they can, but no, certainly when we're talking about secondary students, no, the parents, if they want to use a different gender, a different name, they're comfortable with that decision, they feel that they do not need support, yes, that decision, not the safety.
Okay. And just the last part of that question earlier, we do not provide any post-secondary support in this area, is that correct?
I didn't answer that question because you're talking about after a student graduates. After a student graduates, again, at eighteen or nineteen years old, they are an adult. But in terms of support for students, we have a lot of supports for students in our schools. Certainly, our school counselors, our administrators, our psychologists do provide students and their families with a variety of supports. And again, that is the choice of the student and the families to use those.
Okay. I didn't realize they could continue to come back post-secondary.
Now, I'm talking about while they're in the schools. In terms of a student, let's say the graduation was last week, and what the student's doing a year or two from now in college, that is not a high school. That would be the support where, in the community.
So there's no support from the school on safety?
If a student were to come back and ask for guidance or support, absolutely. I know our administrators, I know their hearts, I know when I walk into the hallways, particularly the last week, to see students who have graduated in past years come back, they talk to them about a variety of things, and I see the hugs that occur. So, once a Smithfield student, always a Smithfield student.
Okay. Thank you.
Clear this up. I believe the principal of the high school is here. Maybe get specific answers on those type of questions. Good morning, Mr. Kelly.
Good morning.
Scott, am I up?
Yeah.
Scott. Scott Burnett.
Testing.
Testing. Scott. Anyone? You ready?
Scott.
Scott. There we go. Better? I got a green light. There we go. All right. So, we have a gender support plan that we use in our, at the secondary level, that has been shared, six through twelve. So if a student were to notify a counselor, which is generally where it goes through, we go through a school counselor, probably ninety-five percent of the time, they would ask that student, you know, what kind of support do you want to put in place? Can we bring a team together and have a discussion and talk through concerns and where they want to go with the process? So we would start a transition support plan, we would ask the student, which, how do they want to identify? The staff, support staff that would be in that plan, the date of the plan, and then there's a series of questions that we would go through. And the first ones are, is family aware of and involved in the creation of the plan? The family is aware but declining involvement in the plan? And then we take notes on that conversation. Student reports not aware, student unwilling to make family aware at this time. And then we get into, what's your preferred name? We check all the, so there's a series of checkboxes that we go through to identify what the student needs are, what they would like, and we talk through that with that gender support team. And generally, that's a counselor, it could be a school psychologist, could be a social worker, could be an admin, depends on who the student is comfortable with and who they want at that table and for that conversation. We'll talk about pronouns, we'll talk about other areas of support, that would include restrooms, that would include locker rooms, that might include athletics. It all depends on where that individual student wants to go and what type of supports they're looking for. Does that help?
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Mr. Jim.
Just a follow-up, and maybe the superintendent, you know, can share her thoughts as well. I mean, ultimately, you know, everything we do is trying to involve parents. We know that parental involvement is hugely important. However, there is a balancing act because for decades, it's been established that students do have privacy rights in school. And we have to respect the student who is not ready yet to share that information and work with that student to get to the point where we can involve the parents and family, but we can't disregard federal law that provides those rights to those students. And so, I think that might be one of the reasons that a school cannot automatically report to a parent without that student's permission. Now, we already do that K-25, that's in the policy, but it's, you know, we're not making up new guidelines. You have these guidelines, well-established by guidelines, federal law and court precedent. So, our students do have privacy rights. I mean, I would, my students, my son's in eighth grade right now, I had a conversation with him the other day about where are you with all this? You know, so I would encourage parents to have that conversation, or create that climate at home where that child feels comfortable, where you can broach that conversation if you are concerned about their gender identity, their sexuality, or, you know, what bathrooms they're using. So, I think that's a relationship between the school and the parents. So hopefully, parents can create that environment at home where those students feel comfortable having that conversation. Thank you.
Ben, could you tell me what you believe changes between the ages of ten and eleven that then makes a student capable to make that decision?
I'm not a medical expert. I rely on research and expert advice from those who are experts.
So, but you do believe that our policy is correct, that that's an eight, that as it stands today, that...
Based on research, based on all the experts, based on all the renowned resources we've done, I concur with the research that's out there. This guidance that we have is provided by the Rhode Island Department of Education. They created that guidance based on all the most expert advice out there, and we rely on that. We don't have to adopt their guidance, but to not follow their guidance, or to take it account as naive, and discount all the information and research that goes into it. The five of us are not experts on this subject matter.
Absolutely.
None of us are. And so, we have to do our due diligence and actually make sure that we are relying on the experts. I was hoping we would have some people here today that could kind of share some of that information with us. I don't know if we do, I don't know if anyone was actually invited by the chair. But I have to acknowledge, I'm not an expert in this field, so I have to rely on the expert advice of our school staff. You know, we rely on them all the time, our school psychologists, our guidance, our social workers, we rely on all the resources that are put in place by the Rhode Island Department of Education, we rely on our medical advice from our school physician, we rely on the Rhode Island Department of Health. So, you know, I'm a student, I'm a lifelong learner, and, you know, this is what we have to do. We have to make sure that we're using reputable research, and I think starting with the guidance that was provided by the Rhode Island Department of Education is what my predecessors did on this committee. They adopted a policy, it's been in place since 2018. I'm not aware of any issue or concern, like any issues that we've had. And I certainly advocate for more privacy, certainly exploring ways that we can provide more opportunities for students to use single-use bathrooms, more privacy in the locker rooms. But in terms of a student's privacy rights, no, that's established. We cannot violate our students' privacy rights. We'd be doing a disservice to them, we'd be eliminating schools a safe place. These students would no longer feel like they have a trusted adult in the school environment that they can turn to. And that's not to say they don't trust their parents, it's just, this is awkward, you know? If all of us have had the sex talk with our kids, it's awkward. And sometimes, kids feel more comfortable initiating that conversation about their gender identity or sexuality with a trusted adult, and then they can help work with that student to help get their parents in place. And so, this is already in the policy, this is all in the policy. So, I'm very comfortable where the policy is now. We can tweak about bathroom accessibility and things like that, but in terms of parent notification, I think the policy is spot on. Thanks.
So, again, when you said, talking about sexuality, these are for children, you think that children should talk about their sexualities with teachers? This is an education system. We should not be...
Yes, we educate students. The students might, in fifth grade, start talking about reproduction.
No, exactly, but talking about their personal sexualities with somebody who's not, somebody who's not their parent is a problem. I mean, to remove a parent from a child when a teacher doesn't necessarily know all of them. I mean, if somebody were to take my own child's rights and say, no, I know what's better other than you, their parent, it seems, is that not what you're doing? It seems bizarre.
So, I'd like to refer to, I don't know if you all received the email from Mr. John Burns yesterday?
Yeah.
And I don't have it right in front of me, but he said something to the effect, and I apologize if I misparaphrased, but he said, "We're not, we're here to support, we're here to support, that's what we do." And I, as a teacher, I don't feel comfortable having that conversation with the student, which is why we refer to them, to a school, I would refer them to the guidance department, and say, yeah, that's the person to talk to because they're trained and ready to do that. So, it's about supporting, it's about helping the student figure themselves out. I mean, their hormones are raging, they're, you know, they're confused, they're figuring themselves out, they're figuring out their identity. So, school is a place where we have trained professionals who help provide that support. And I have two children in the school system right now. If my child, you know, I have an eighth-grade son, if my child starts having a conversation with his guidance counselor that is confused and maybe likes boys, and that guidance counselor could help him initiate that conversation with me, great. I mean, that's, I think that's a wonderful thing, and it helps my child navigate a very confusing time. I think if we start getting into mandated reporting, a very confused child will have nowhere to turn. And then, what we end up with is a whole host of other issues. We end up with the student increased anxiety, potential absenteeism, lower academic achievement, and ultimately, self-harm. And we know how far that can go, when a child feels like they have nowhere to turn. And school is one of those places they turn. And unfortunately, if we do initiate or pass a policy that requires mandated reporting at the sixth through twelfth grade level, I fear that something bad will happen, and that will be on the five of us. That will be on us. We'll pass a policy, we'll leave it in the hands of our school administrators, and potentially down the road, a student is going to harm themselves, and that will be, you know, we'll have contributed to that by limiting school as a safe place for them to have that conversation. Schools, we mandate schools, kids to go to school, and they deserve a safe and supportive environment where they can figure themselves out. And once again, parents are important, we want parents, that's enshrined in the policy right now. But we respect students' confidentiality rights, and we respect the right, or we take into consideration that in some unique circumstances, reporting home could do harm, because not every family is supportive. Now, when I say supportive, of course, it's a shock to some families who are not aware, but ultimately, in some situations, and I said this at a previous meeting, I have a, well, we just finished, but I have a student right now where we know that if we report that that child is transgender, that child knows he will be removed from the home, he will become homeless. The largest population of homeless children in this state right now are transgendered students. So, we owe it to the child to involve parents as best we can, but also to respect their confidentiality rights, to ensure that they have a safe place where that they can seek that counsel that they need, and then ultimately, work with them to get parents involved so that we can all work as a team to help that student succeed, feel comfortable with who they are, and selfishly, you know, achieve academic excellence so that Smithfield schools can really be successful.
Right. I think, you know, Ben, I agree with you. I want every child to feel supported and come into Smithfield schools not facing any hate at all. I a hundred percent agree with you. I do have, like, you know, I go back and forth with the parent, like, I just, that's the one thing, Monday through Friday, there's somebody here in high school, in middle school, ten, eleven years old, nights and weekends, there's somebody else. Do we have the support staff here at Smithfield Public Schools to help these children? We see all, I saw all of the information that was sent to me, all of the emails, everything comes back, high suicide rates, right? And that's not every transgender transitioning student at all, that's not. Not everybody faces the same mental health. But I worry, those students that do face that mental, that mental health, nights and weekends, they don't have the support. Can Smithfield, quote, provide the right support during the day?
Granted, that's a fair point. We care about our students twenty-four seven, seven days a week, but just to give you some context, the amount of students, and Mr. Kelly might have better stats on this, the amount, and this is outside of transgender, we have a tremendous amount of students who have issues at home. We have displaced students, we have students with mental health issues, profound anxiety, we have students engaging in self-harm. This is outside of transgender, this is just...
A hundred percent.
And we are not a mental health facility. We do the best we can to provide support, but we cannot provide...
Exactly.
...support all the time. So, to say that we want to mandate reporting of students' sexuality or transgender status because they won't have support on the weekend, I think is not a fair responsibility on the school, because if that's the case, then we've got to take on a whole lot more responsibility with all our other students experiencing issues on the weekend, not to mention the kids who are food insecure. You know, we provide them food during the week, but we don't provide them food on the weekend. So, I think that's maybe not a fair ask of the school department.
Well, you know, we talk about that, and I, we don't have them on the weekend, we actually have them on a school day twenty-five percent of the time. So where are they the other seventy-five percent of the time? They're in the custody of their parents, or guardians during the week. We don't have, you know, only the weekends of, we have them eighteen percent of the time. So where are they the other eighty-two percent of the time? During the course of the year, we have them approximately twelve and a half percent of the time. So where are they the other eighty-seven and a half percent of the time? And to think that we are solving a problem for somebody who has a mental health or some other problem by saying, yeah, we took care of them while we were in school, and not getting them somewhere else. That's one of the reasons in the whole issue of allowing parents to not, you know, discussion, you know, in on it. It's, the schools do not have that much of a sway right now in terms of the full day, the full week, the full year of individual students. In fact, some of our own policies even say that the primary person regarding health, parents are primarily responsible for the health of the students. Well, they can't be handling the full health of their students if they're not fully involved. But I do want to go back to a couple of things that you mentioned about privacy rights. So basically, you're saying, and our policy says it, is up to fifth grade, they have no privacy rights. After fifth grade, now suddenly, they get privacy rights. We also mentioned that we got guidance. Yes, we do have guidance. In fact, when this policy was first adopted back in the spring of 2018, it was said by the superintendent that this is general guidance. And that's fine, and I think it is pretty good, the general guidance. That doesn't mean that a school committee cannot look at any policy and make changes that it feels are in the best interest in its own town, its own school system, its own students. We have done it with many policies, because recently, we adopted a policy that came, it's a standard one off the books, I guess, from the Department of Education concerning marijuana and how we distribute marijuana in the school system, and for those that have a medical reason for it. We made some changes to that policy that we thought were appropriate. I don't think, when we get down to all this, we're trying to blow up a policy, we're trying to fine-tune some things that we do think are wrong with. So, you know, that is something that we have to look at. Where do the privacy rights begin? Where do they end? I would like to go back to the superintendent on a couple of questions while we're at it here. And maybe Mr. Kelly might have to answer these, so he might not be able to answer all of them, but in the policy, it's mentioned, you know, it mentions that if a kid doesn't feel safe, that they, you know, don't have to look to parents. I'm guessing the school department right now does some type of analysis, some type of study, or some trail to say, yeah, that eleven-year-old that said that is, the reason that we believe that, or that eleven-year-old is being overly dramatic in saying, for lack of a better term. So what do we do right now? When that question comes up, that, and Mr. Kelly might throw a nice checklist, the parents know, you want the parents to know. What happens right now? If the person says, no, I don't, I can't, for the following reason?
Again, I assume that we're talking about middle school students?
Well, I'm talking all, but I use the eleven-year-old one because that was the demarcation you just discussed there.
And I'm just going to go back to my original statement, which is, common procedures that we use is that the schools are not in the practice of keeping secrets from any families. In fact, as Mr. Kelly said, and as I tried to explain earlier, having parents involved in the process if a student is considering transitioning socially at the schools, we do try to involve the parents. We do not have the practice of keeping secrets. But I want to go back to the policy and the role of the school committee, as you stated, policies and the changes, that is the purview of the school committee. The school committee develops, accepts, and can modify policies. In this particular policy that was adopted by that school committee in 2018, it is based on a mix of law and also guidance. Title IX specifically of the Education Amendment 1972 specifically prohibits discrimination on the base of sex in federally funded education programs. The U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights has issued guidance recognizing Title IX protects transgender students against discrimination based on their gender identity. So we follow the law. In addition, we follow the Rhode Island Department of Education's guidance that you are also aware of, and those are both in the particular policy. Most policies, like many laws, but I'm not a lawyer, have some areas that are open to interpretation. So, to say in every instance, yes, based on an age, we would always, at least based on the policy right now, at ten or eleven, as your example stated, we would always tell parents. The ideal is to involve families in the process with the child in a supportive area. Many times, and I'm going to say, based on my conversations with our elementary and middle school principals and assistant principals, it's often the reverse, it's often the parents coming into our offices and saying, this is what's happening, can you support a son or daughter at the school? So the school is, again, in a role of being supportive. We are here for students, we work with families. There are certain circumstances, and again, we do have some experts who are in the audience who work specifically in the medical and the healthcare fields that can speak to potentials, as mentioned before, of harm for students if the school were, for instance, to be triggered, that if a student comes up, again, in a hypothetical, and says, I am thinking, you know, I might be transgender, or I'm thinking I might be gay or lesbian, and if that triggered, a trusted adult that the student disclosed to, to immediately contact a parent, that could have really significant impacts on that student. At the very least, it would, that adult would no longer be the trusted adult. Believe me, our teachers are not trying to have students disclose. When students disclose to someone at a school, it is because that student has found someone that they trust.
Let's take that for now. That's our one, I have to answer the question. The question is, is the student, we already said the student has, you know, reached out to somebody or whatever, we already said there's going to be some type of transitioning plan or whatever, as kind of Mr. Kelly suggested at the high school level at least. So now, that particular student says, I don't want you to tell my parents. All I'm looking for is what does the school department do presently in terms of assessing, is that right or wrong? Do we go the extra step?
We do have, I'm sorry, Mr. Sherman, we do have, we do assess, and there are, as Mr. Kelly had said, at all of the levels, an assessment team. Mr. Kelly, I believe, if you'll allow, can again, reiterate or expand on that a little bit more?
Yes. So, in the gender support plan that the district is utilizing, first section, family is aware, family is involved in the creation of the plan, aware but declining involvement in the plan, student reports not aware, and student unwilling to make family aware at this time. The student, and we have, the student signs this plan, it's part of the development. The student acknowledges that mistakes may be made, and their family may unintentionally become aware of status if the student chooses to be affirmed at school, this is an inherent risk. The family is not aware, changes will not be made in the student information system. Teachers and staff may make mistakes because of this, please assume best intent, however, if you're not feeling it is not being honored, please let an administrator know. And then we go through where we want to make those changes. So, if the student does not want to be identified, doesn't want parents to know, then we're not going to make that change in infinite campus. The student may want to make the change in Google, with their email address, they may want to make that change in Google Classroom, the student has the ability to make that change. And so, it's all about their level of comfort and how much they want to have out in the world. So how do we track that and assess that? We review those gender assessments, those gender support plans as a team, and we talk about those at different times of the year to try to get a sense of where kids are at. So I make a formal report to the superintendent with that, and you know it. So basically, what happens, if the student says, don't tell my parents, that's it, don't tell my parents.
We're not going to tell them. We're going to do our best to not tell them, but this is a scenario that we run into.
But no answer.
Don't tell my parent, all right? I want you to call me my preferred name. And so, we've had situations with staff where at a parent-teacher conference, the kid is present there sometimes, and they have the student what they want their name, and the parent doesn't know that that's that name. That's part of that inherent risk, and we talk through that in that process. And that has been a concern of staff, because they don't want to out a kid, if, they don't want the family, if the kid doesn't want the family to know, it's a huge fear for staff in something that they are...
Yeah, and very much. I can appreciate that. What I'm just trying to get at is, the student says, I don't want my parents to tell me, it ends right there.
Yes.
Right? We don't make any effort to say, well, you know, if the student says, I don't, because of a safety issue, because that's what's been brought up, not just the kid saying, I just don't want my parents to know.
If the student identifies a safety issue, and that requires us to go in a different direction, we'll continue that conversation, so...
And so, that's what I'm trying to look at, is just, is after the kid says it, is it just a flat, okay, parents know, no, or is it a, do you get into looking at, is there grounds for safety, is that the problem, or is it just because the kid doesn't want to know?
It depends, it's where that conversation goes, and where those counselors and the school psychologists in their training will help determine that. And so, if a student were to say, you know, I'm being beaten at home, then we're going to have a different conversation, we're going to have to go in a different direction because legally, we have to report that.
Yeah, that's a clear thing, because we have other policies in state law.
Correct.
But I'm just talking about kid says, no, I don't want, I don't want, no, I'm concerned, concerned of safety, that's different from getting beaten, or some...
I bet students have said, I am concerned, my dad doesn't know, and I'm afraid of how he will react.
Right.
Or my mom, or how she will react.
We just take his word, that's all we're trying to get, we just take the kid's word, we don't do any further stuff.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I guess, with regards to the middle school, do we know if it's the same way or not with regards to the, we'll say the eleven, twelve, thirteen-year-old, the kid says, I don't want to know?
Mr. Burns, I think he spelled that out, wrote that email, and he said, yes, we had a mobile, not a...
Massive superintendent, just a nut. We have emails and all that, I just want to find out officially.
Based on the experiences at the middle school, and certainly outlined by the... Based on the experiences at the middle school and certainly outlined by the administration there, with younger students, it certainly looks different oftentimes than it does with a high school student. Students will go still to the trusted adult. Again, at all times, it's important that our administrators and our counseling support staff help the students with those conversations with parents, particularly our younger students, so that the student can disclose. It is best-case scenario to be able to assist a student in that disclosure with the parent than to have supports as well in school.
All right, so again, if the student says, I don't want you to let my parents know, is there a procedure where we say, you know, we go further in and say, we think there's reason behind this, or the kid just doesn't want parents to know?
It would mirror the high school's policy, so again, it would be the 16, 12, that would be the same policies and procedures.
Now, just a couple minutes ago, Mr. Kelly brought up something which I was going to talk about later on, parent conferences. If a parent comes into a parent conference right now and says to a teacher at the parent conference, what do you call my kid? What bathroom my kid use, etc., any of those type of questions, how's our teacher handle? And again, we're assuming the kid didn't want parents to know.
Then the teacher at a parent conference, it probably would not be an appropriate item to be talking about the student's transitioning at a parent conference. What they would be doing would be talking about the student's progress. A student would let the teacher know the name he or she they would like to be known at that conference.
God, I'm just drawing from my own experience. I mean, I know when we have parent conferences, a lot of times, you know, we talk about the academics, obviously that's my thing, but we'd also talk about how is the student socializing, how are they getting along, are they behaving in class, all these other things. And that's why I don't think it's a, I mean, I don't know, I think a parent would be a little upset if they all of a sudden started talking about that and stand back. So what you're saying, if you think they just wouldn't discuss it?
Well, again, not a secret, but I don't think it would be appropriate at a parent-student conference, which again could be 10 to 20 minutes long if we're talking about those that are scheduled to get into discussion of transition. And also, that wouldn't be the role of the teacher. That would not be the role of the teacher.
But just a few moments ago, it was the role of the teacher to support that student if they came to them and disclosed that information. We also earlier said that we're not hiding any information, but then Mr. Kelly just said that if the student point-blank just said, no, I'm not comfortable, we would take their word for it and not tell them that. Now we're saying when a teacher comes in, or when a parent comes in and point-blank asks a question, that we're then just not going to answer.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the part that the teacher asked during a student conference, that the teacher is being asked a question by the parent, is my child transgender? That was not the question that I'm responding to. In fact, that's very, very different. So in a parent conference, a student, the question that I heard, so please clarify if I have it wrong, this student has said to the teach, one of several teachers, or all of the teachers that the student has in middle and high school, please do not disclose, and assume that the student has already gone through the process. Mr. Kelly has outlined, there is a support team in place, but please call me by the pronoun and the name that is my preferred name. Then yes, the teacher would refer to the student based on what the student would like to be called.
Gregor, Richard's question was if the parent point-blank asks the teacher if their child is being referred to by a different name in school or using the opposite gender bathroom, what would the teacher's response be?
I would imagine in the scenario where they're doing a parent conference, that the teacher may at that point not be comfortable having that conversation. There's probably other parents who would refer the parent to the administrator.
So they would come back to Mr. Kelly, and then how would you answer that question?
I would go by whatever the student's wishes were. And I would think that the teacher in that moment is going to have to make a split-second decision and go with their gut, what they think is best at that moment. All right, but they're going to do their best to follow the wishes of the student. As far as the bathroom question, Richard, that you asked, I don't know if any, I've never heard of any parent asking about what bathroom their kid is using to a teacher, and the teacher would most likely say, you got to talk to Kelly about that. I will give you an example that happened this past weekend at graduation. We were all up on stage, and a parent came up to the side of the stage and said, so-and-so, you're going to call so-and-so's name out this way? And caught me off guard, I said, you're going to use this name, right? And I said, I'm going to use whatever name your kid gave me that we practiced the last two days of graduation. Well, I want this name. I said, I'm using the name the kid gave me at rehearsal. And they walked away. So that makes it clear.
You did. Earlier, I was explaining that if something is happening, people will start that.
Yes.
You're right. It may have to this point never be a thing that somebody is going to say, you know, what bathroom I use. And I just use that. What I'm worried about is us putting teachers in awkward situations, to be honest.
Every day.
But now.
Your teacher doesn't sign up for it.
Let's go back to the bathroom situation right now. And you probably know the high school, this would also refer to other schools as well. The, there must be a, you got to have a way of knowing that so-and-so can go into this bathroom, so that if a teacher or somebody just sees a person transitioning to a female walking into a girl's bathroom, they, you know that it's okay.
We've already addressed that in the gender support plan meeting. So that is one of the items that we talk about, is how are we going to handle the bathroom situation? How would you, student X, how would you like to handle the bathroom situation? What is your preference? The majority of students that I have worked with don't want to choose a bathroom in a public room, in a public restroom. And so our option that has been since I've been the principal here, for any issue, whether you're transgender, whether you're afraid to go number two in public, whatever the situation is, you use the nurse's bathroom. It's the cleanest, it's the safest, and it's the most private spot to go to. And so that has worked for us in the 18 years that I've been a principal here, it's never been an issue.
That plan somewhere lets all faculty and staff know that so-and-so can go into a different bathroom. It does.
No, because in the 18 years I've been here, I've never had a student say, I want, I identify as a, I'm a male, identify as a female, I want to use the different bathroom. Every student we've talked to doesn't want that spotlight on them. And so nurse's bathroom is running.
Trying to find out how it's running right now. So it is not common among staff that so-and-so can use this bathroom, a bathroom.
Correct.
It is, if it's in the plan, a select number of people know it's in the plan.
It's common among, it's common among staff through when these support plans are shared that student X needs this, student X has permission to do this. Student X may be in our student hall pass, e-hall pass system and have those things identified.
Very good. Okay, thank you. And with regards to the other schools, Dr. Burns, how was it handled there?
In terms of?
In terms of the, we'll say the staff in general knowing so-and-so can use the bathroom that normally speaking, they would not, you know, white, gray, and I are.
I think very similar to what Mr. Kelly said, it would not be sent out, broadcast throughout the school.
But there was, they would somehow know.
There would be the support plan in place the same way at the middle school.
Thank you. Okay. Other questions? Yes, Mr. Rosa.
I have a couple of things. Being a little older than everyone else, I don't actually have any kids in the school system, so I'm looking at things probably at a little different perspective. My question, I'm curious, I'd love to know where we stand. Mr. Kelly alluded to it physically. Do we have the adequate facilities for kids if we do have situations where they would like or need a special consideration? And I know, as Mr. Kelly alluded to, I know the teachers are occasionally notified of special health considerations or things that kids need. So are we up to snuff with that? Do we have the facilities to take care of these kids? Secondly, we have some great, some ideas, and obviously a little divergence of opinion as to how we're going to talk about notifying parents. I'm curious as to where do we stand right now with state, federal law? We just can't come in here and say, let's change this, we're going to do this. We already got notification, I guess I can mention it, from the ACLU telling us that some of the things we talked about at one of the first meetings were not proper. And we already got notification from our lawyer that we have to be careful about what we say because we might be putting ourselves in some kind of legal jeopardy. So where do we stand? Do we need to change the policy that has been in effect for five or six years? Six years now, I guess, five years, 2018, I should know that, I was a math teacher. Do we have, do, do we need to make a change? Or do we need to tweak a little bit? You know, and, little stuff down here. You know, again, as I'm saying, we're, I worked in this building for 50 years, and there are a lot of bathrooms. There's a, there's a way of, there's a way of making sure everybody is able to do what they need to do, or go where they need to go. And I worked with the staff of this building, and I know that they are caring individuals. I know that the people on this stage are all interested in what's best for your children. Okay? But we also have to note that not everybody is the same. I coached for years, and I'll think the difference a little bit with Richard, where he's talked about the percentages to kids in school. I know I coached wrestling and softball and football and whatever, and those kids were family to me. I see them now where they come up. I had a thing last summer where half a dozen kids come up and said to me, I wouldn't be where I am today if it wasn't for you. I don't know how many times over the years I had parents telling me my son would not have graduated from high school if you didn't follow him around and keep him out of trouble. We have, we have access to these kids a lot more than we'd like to, you know, then maybe we should. And because there's a lot of times when somebody would say, you're the only one I can talk to because you don't judge me. I did remember something. You know, I mean, we are, you know, we're doing, we're doing hopefully what's best for your kids, and the decisions we have to make have to be based on what's good for the kids and what's good legally, because we don't want to put the Smithfield school system in a situation where we're making decisions that we legally cannot make.
With regards to the bathroom issue, there are, I don't know, there's something like 16 or so sets of bathrooms through this school. And one of the reasons I brought this up a long time ago is, is they need to be updated. There is no doubt about it, they have, most of them haven't had anything other than this arrow here, which we did a couple of years ago, haven't had anything since the school was built in the 1960s, and it needs to be corrected. Before I go on to the bathroom, though, I just want to see, in the first part, we were talking about how things are running right now. If there are further questions from anybody on the school committee regarding, I'll think there are none, yes, in this case.
Not so much a question, but just a point of clarification. So when we're looking back at the policy, if you look at the exact language, I apologize, I don't have my phone loaded up here, so, I mean, I don't have my computer loaded up, so I'm doing this from my phone. The current policy doesn't actually mandate that we don't tell parents. As Mr. Kelly alluded, it's a case-by-case basis, and every single student's situation is so unique. And the idea that they have a plan in place where they evaluate each kid on a case-by-case basis to establish and to work with them to notify their parents, as we began, it's always, you know, the superintendent said it, the principal said it, the goal is always parental involvement while also respecting the student's confidentiality rights and also ensuring that we're not putting the student at harm. So the goal is to involve parents. It is. But it's a balancing act between student rights, what's best for the student and the parents. I just wanted to quote one more thing. I brought up an email that was sent yesterday from the assistant principal of the middle school that I found to be extremely powerful and valuable because what it did is, like Mr. Kelly is doing right now, it provided a lot more context about what's really happening in our schools. And so one of the paragraphs he wrote, he said, you know, I can actually quote it here, he said, "A very small minority of students share that they are not comfortable being out at home due to real or perceived trans or homophobia. In those cases, there is a discussion about what makes them feel that way, a discussion about safety, etc. In those cases, we will honor the child's wishes to be referred to by their chosen name and pronouns, continue frequent check-ins." And that's something you were alluding to, is, you know, to be follow-up. According to Mr. Burns, they do follow-up, they check in routinely, and they revisit the discussion about being out at home. So there is an effort to continue revisiting the child's situation and to continue to encourage or help work with them to bring their parents on board. So I would encourage the members of the committee right now to, if you didn't get an opportunity, I know it came in late yesterday, really look at that email because it really paints a picture at the middle school level of how this policy is put in place and how it's enacted, where it balances parental rights, it balances student rights, it balances ultimately what's best for our students to ensure that they're learning in a safe and supportive environment.
I feel like we have some contradiction here. We've heard time and time again that we do as much as we can to involve the parents, but then Mr. Kelly just clearly said, if a student just point-blank says, I don't want to tell my parents, they're not going to tell their parents. And I'm not picking on Mr. Kelly by any means. I actually appreciate his direct answer because we haven't been able to get one until he directly answered that for us. So again, we're contradicting ourselves, we're saying we try our best, we go out of our way, we want to involve the parents, but then we just said, if they say, no, I don't want to, that point-blank, we're not going to involve them. And let me be clear, the reason we need to involve parents is because any student that is experiencing gender dysphoria and would like to start transitioning needs all the supports they can get, and they strongly do not believe that our school system can provide all the support they need. They need external support, which requires healthcare, which requires parents to be involved, and it is imperative that parents are involved to help them through that process.
That was one of the things I was going to bring up, is it's not on a case-by-case basis. Case-by-case would be this person, we decided this, this student, like this, here, it's right across the board. And what I was trying to get at earlier was, is the middle school, what do they do? And I was going, basically similar to the high school, but as you point out, Mr. Burns' email suggests, no, they're not, they're looking deeper into it and going, whatever. And that's all I wanted to know is how we're handling it right now. Are we going further? Because his own email says, real or perceived. And it's a small minority, but real or perceived problems. And I'm just trying to figure out, how do we figure out the real? How do we figure out the perceived? So, okay. Any further questions on current procedures?
I think, I think I just have one.
Yeah.
So talk about support staff on this committee. I should be with how much in each, the middle, at the middle school level and the high school level, what are the numbers for our support staff? I don't know if we have it right there or not, but just so we can see what supports look like within the district.
You might have to give me a minute to have those specifically. And certainly in general, I can give you the specifics. In fact, it was on my budget presentation. Each of our schools, though, all five of them do have a school psychologist at the middle and the high school. There are school guidance counselors, there is a shared social worker, certainly between the middle and high school as well. In addition, we have some outside services that are inside the schools, a student assistance counselor in particular, that is paid through, by a grant at the high school.
We're going to move on to just bathrooms kind of in general, but before we do, let's take a five-minute break. Okay, it is now 10:13 I have, so we'll be back in roughly five minutes.